Occasionally, a few of them, I see a little bit of green at the very bottom.
All right. Good evening, and welcome to the October ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the City of Shore Acres City Council. Ms. Anderson, will you call the roll?
Mr. Jennings?
Present.
Mr. McCallum?
Present.
Ms. Ramos?
Present.
Mr. Grayson?
Present.
Mr. Hoskins?
Present.
Mr. Bell?
Present.
Everyone is here.
Join me in the pledges, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a redoubtable basis for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. Oh. Did you do that? All right, well, welcome. Good to see you. And we have a special audit presentation tonight, and we are happy to welcome back Stephanie, and she will give us an overview of the audit, and council will be able to question our way. All yours.
Excellent, thank you. My name is Stephanie Harris and one of the partners with the CPA firm Valpares Bahatchek. I will be presenting for you this evening the financial statements for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Page one is our official report to city council. Very pleased to say that we are issuing a clean, unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. Again, unmodified being the highest level of assurance that you're an independent auditor, that the financial statements are materially correct, and that all disclosures required by generally accepted accounting principles have been included. You'll also see a note there on page one about a change in accounting principle. What was effective this year was a new GASP or Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement number eighty-seven that applied to any lease agreements the city may have entered into. All right. Page seventeen. This is a statement of net position or a balance sheet adds up September thirtieth, twenty-two. This particular presentation is full of role, meaning for the city of four acres. This would also include long-term assets or the city's investment in capital assets, as well as your long-term liabilities, which include the long-term debt that was issued to make water infrastructure improvements. You ended the twenty-two fiscal year with total assets of just over twelve point nine million, total liabilities of just over four point nine million, leaving you with an overall positive net position for the city of seven point six million. Now, the bulk of that represents the city's investment in its long-term assets. Another significant asset, just to point out, when you look at this particular financial statement, is the net pension asset. Again, the net pension asset is determined by the city's participation in the statewide Texas Municipal Retirement System Plan. They hire their own actuary. The city has been reporting a net pension asset for a number of years, primarily as a result of their projected long-term investment rates of return. That is something that's pretty volatile, so next year you could go from a four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar asset to a liability. All right. Page eighteen and nineteen. This is a sideways presentation of a traditional income statement. Again, full of role, so things that you don't typically budget for, including depreciation expense would be included. Total expenses for the twenty-two fiscal year came in at just over two point eight million. Of that, that was almost evenly split between governmental services, as well as the provision of water, sewer, and sanitation for city residents. General government activities represented one point seven million in business type, where the water, sewer, and sanitation was approximately one point one million. Charges for services, fees include dollars that are collected by the city to specifically finance a particular function, came in at just over a million. Operating grants and contributions of seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Overall, as you look down the page, you also had general revenues of just over one point four million for governmental activities and sixty thousand for your business type. You did see an overall decrease in your net position for the year of just over three hundred and fifty-five thousand. Page twenty-three. This is the income statement for the city's general fund for the twenty-two fiscal year. This particular presentation is modified of role, so different than the income statement we just looked at. This more closely aligns with what you review and adopt for the general fund in the budget process each year. Total revenues for the year were just over one point six million, total expenditures just over one point three million, which includes capital outline. After a transfer out to utilities, there was a net increase in fund balance of just over two hundred and thirty-three thousand. And in terms of the utility fund, page twenty-nine. Utility funds saw total operating revenues of just over eight hundred and fourteen thousand, total operating expenses, which does include depreciation of two hundred and seventy-four thousand. The total was just over nine hundred and eighty-five thousand for an operating loss of a hundred and seventy-one thousand. After you paid interest expense on long-term debt, you had a loss before transfers of three hundred and two thousand. You received a net transfer in from the general fund of just over thirty-seven thousand for an overall loss of two hundred and sixty-five thousand. If you turn the page, you can see what those activities look like on a cash basis. This is a statement of cash flows, again, for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Net cash provided by operating activities was just over four hundred and forty-seven thousand. Net cash provided by non-capital activities was just over sixty thousand. And then cash flows from capital and related financing activities was a reduction in cash of just over one point two million. Now, that included the city's investment, again, in capital assets at almost a million dollars, to nine hundred and sixty-six thousand in both principal and interest on your long-term debt. Overall, you saw a net decrease in cash for the utility fund of just over seven hundred and twelve thousand. All right. One of the other numbers that I would like to point out, again, is the health of the general fund. Generally, you want to see at least twenty-five percent for three months within your ending fund balance. The general fund's unassigned fund balance represented approximately seventy percent of your twenty twenty-two fiscal years, and then just over eighty percent in total for the year. So you had a very healthy ending fund balance. And that concludes my remarks in terms of the financial statements. We did issue a management letter this year in which we have some several cleanup items noted for the city. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Oh, I thought you saw us raise your hand.
I was just saying, all right.
Okay, so on the general fund, we're seventy to eighty percent, and so we're three times above what recommended.
Yes.
Good. That's the purpose of building cash.
Yes.
Paul, anything?
I think that's outstanding, but the only question I had was, you had mentioned something about there's a change in a lease agreement.
Oh, there was a new lease standard.
Does that have an impact on leases we've already issued?
You had a lease receivable that was recorded as the new, as a part of implementing the new standard. On page forty-two, you will find a footnote about what transactions we found that would be subject to the standard, and in this case, it's mainly a communication tower or a sell-lease tower. You may have had some other minor lease agreements, but they weren't considered material to the financial statements. But one other thing to be mindful of is, for the twenty twenty-three fiscal year, there is another new GASP standard effective for twenty-three, which is called GASP ninety-six or Subscription-Based Information Technology Agreements. And this standard will be very similar to the lease standard in that if you think about your operating leases, whether you're the, let's just say you're the lessy, you've entered into a lease maybe for a copier, you would normally just budget that expense and move on down the road. The new standard had us record a long-term liability for this, for the term of the lease. And then we also had to record an asset or a right-to-use asset that then was amortized over the life of the term of the agreement. So normally, you wouldn't have seen all that. Now, it's on the full, cool financial statement. So similar in twenty-three with GASP ninety-six, the subscription-based information technology agreements, we feel, would be much more wide-reaching than the leases in that it's looking at hosting fees you may pay for the website. It's your Microsoft Office fees. It's any software that you are using, QuickBooks, or other programs for the provision of utility services. All of those different types of arrangements would be subject to the new accounting standard. So it'll be really important for the city to start, if you're not already, maintaining some sort of file specific to those types of agreements, because even if we determine nothing is material to twenty-three, something may change the next year.
Okay, yeah. Interesting. That's pretty low-level.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Felicia, anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Jerome?
No, sir.
Wes?
Oh, no, sir.
All right, well, thank you so much for coming out, and we look forward to the next time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that was positive. Like positive reports. All right, moving on. Item four-point-O, council reports and requests. This is the opportunity for council to talk about what they've done during the preceding month that affects the community. Wes, anything?
I don't have anything.
Ron?
He's on the register.
Nothing interesting? Ron?
He's up.
You'll be back in a minute.
Hurry up!
Nothing to report?
Please?
Nothing.
Jerome?
County did a great job on Shore Acres Boulevard this week, mowing it, the ditches.
Very good. We'll talk about our ditches in just a minute. All right. Item five-point-O, public hearings and public comments. Item five-point-one, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget hearing. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on the proposed budget. This is an opportunity for you guys to talk about what we're planning to do next year. It's been about two months in process, it's all on the website, so y'all want to talk about it, step up and talk about the budget.
Well, I mean, we're, I think we're talking about...
We're going to be talking about something totally separate of that.
Okay. This is a budget hearing.
Okay.
Okay, doesn't know? All right. Moving on. For the record, no public comments on the budget. Item five-point-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four tax rate hearing. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on the proposed tax rate that council will adopt next week. And same as the last one, is a hearing, talk about the tax rate. The tax rate that the council has proposed and may adopt next week is a no new revenue rate, which means no tax increase, period. So no tax increase, and most of us will get a tiny little decrease if we actually looked at the fine point, so. Moving on. Item five-point-three, public comments. This is the opportunity for the public to address council or comment on items which appear on the agenda. Time is limited to five minutes per speaker. Comments are to be directed to city council, and dialogue with the audience is not permitted. Council members are prohibited by law from participating in a discussion or deliberation of items that are not specifically named on the agenda. So with that said, public comments are open. Mr. Perdieu?
Is this the time for me to make a public comment?
It's public time. You'll stand at the podium, say your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is George Perdieu, thirty-six, twenty-two, Miramar Drive. I've lived in Shore Acres since two thousand seventeen was on Baywood Street before. We built a house of our dreams, and it is on the corner. We knew when we built it, it was going to be a very busy corner. The question I have is, I've grown up from a little child down here. My father brought me down here when I was very young, and Miramar on the east side of the street has always been, no parking on the east side of Miramar, and I believe it is even an ordinance. My understanding it was. And so when I purchased this house, this lot, I looked at the lot, I saw the lot had a, three parking places, maybe two. There was a Shell Beach sign, which is a very tiny beach, I'm sure everybody knows, it's mostly made of shell, and it's enjoyed by the people of Shore Acres, and I expect it to be enjoyed by the people of Shore Acres. I'm a member, I live in Shore Acres, I want everybody to enjoy it. So when I looked at it, I said, you know, three people, golf carts, everything, be fine. And then we say probably a fifteen to twenty-foot, twenty-car parking garage, not garage, parking space is being put in, and my question is, is build it and they will come, is my real concern. And we live in a little city, and the reason we live in Shore Acres is that we don't want to be living in Houston, Texas, or we go up Houston, we don't have to worry about hurricanes, floods, high insurance, high flood insurance, all the above. We could be living in Houston with all the crazies. And so we come down here to stay away from that. And Troy even mentioned he'd love to have gates at the front of the suburb, not the suburb, the city of Shore Acres and not let anybody in, but that's impossible to do. But to build twenty or so parking spaces or places for people to park in an area of a beach as small as Shore Acres, I see a lot of, Shell Beach, I see a lot of problems of the fact that there's going to be trash, dirt, there's going to be maybe fights, because when you get that many people packed in that small of a beach, one guy spills a beer on somebody else's table, somebody turns a table over, you know, it's not real stable down there, somebody could get into a fistfight. It doesn't bother me too much, because it falls off, so most of the sound and the noise and the music and the things don't seem to come over. So I'm not really, I want people to have a good time. I think it's great that they enjoy it. But then we got another problem. We have, we have people that are going from the Houston Yacht Club to a fence, and I presume they have the right to do that. Then they go through that fence, they're launching boats, barefooted, with feet, with shoes on, I don't know. We have people that are going down to the beach, barefooted, little kids running around the beach barefooted. And then the next thing I see is a guy casting a rod, which I love fishing, I'm a fisherman, I like fishing. And the hooks catching on the bottom, we have shells, which they break hooks off very often. So you got, you got the problem of having children and people going out on this little bitty beach, twenty or thirty cars, no telling where they're coming from. And I built my house, I only needed two thousand square feet, we didn't need the other floor. The other floor is for my grandchildren, so they'll come down and see me. So here's my granddaughter going out on this beach, we don't know who might want to be looking at little girls in bathing suits going out on that beach, I'm not really sure. And, because we are not able to keep track of that, as Troy says, you know, it's public. So I, I think that we need to figure out some way that either we take the Shell Beach sign out, we take all the posts out, we put the no parking sign back up, and we let people of Shore Acres enjoy Shore Acres Shell Beach. Maybe the sign says Shore Acres Shell Beach for the city of Shore Acres residents, maybe that's not possible. It certainly has worked on the pier before, it's, they have their own little association. It might be a little bit too strong. I think some of the reasons that we're getting so many fishermen is that they're coming off of not wanting to pay the hundred dollars a year, and they're coming down to Shell Beach and fishing. And so now we've got people that are swimming in the water with fishermen and hooks and lines, people sailing, and we're going to throw in that whole mix, people from all over Houston. This is the funniest thing I've ever seen yet, right before one of these lightning storms, after we've been begging for rain all summer, we had a lightning storm, an Uber pulled up in front, let three boys out of an Uber car, young boys, and they were told that they were bathing beauties on this beach, okay? They go down to the beach, and they want to know, where are all the girls? So they came all the way from Kingwood, by the way.
That's about minutes. Actually, that's about six minutes, actually.
Oh, six minutes? Oh, I've been too long?
I know, you did very good, George.
Oh, well, I just want to tell you that there's lots of issues. I'll conclude, because I've been too long, is that I would like to say that I would, my proposal is that we immediately wall off with tape all the new parking space, because they're very muddy, I've had to, I pulled two cars out this weekend myself. And we pull the cars, we put, tape them off, we put the no parking signs back in, we form a little committee and discuss what the issues could be with bringing and inviting all of these people into a city with a small beach.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to see that.
All right.
I'll go next.
Thank you for the extra time.
All right. My name's Robert Johnson, that's my wife, Hallie, there. We live next door to Georgia, thirty-six, eighteen, Miramar Drive. We really, we're new down here, so we've really enjoyed the community, and it's been great for us so far, we really like it. But I have some concern about, when I saw this parking lot kind of expand right in front of my house, too. I agree with everything that George said, and as of, I mean, what's funny in my notes, as of yesterday evening, I watched twelve different vehicles pull up. They all got out with fishing gear, and they all lined up on the beach, and there was families down there that were probably local, because they were in golf carts, they all left, because all these guys are out there fishing, and you can't, you know, they don't want your kids jumping in the water or anything like that. So that's our big concern, is it seems like, I don't want this to become another Sylvan Beach, I know it's not as big, or a L. Hardine Beach over here. I mean, it's always been nice having a nice quiet, looks like locals always coming down there and hanging out, but since we've done this, we're starting to see a lot of people. We, we watched two boys pull up the other day, and they were playing music in their car right there in that spot, and they were just playing their music. I was on the porch listening to them, it wasn't my type of music, but, you know, maybe the police come by and they'll tell them to stop or something, but all of a sudden, they tried to start the vehicle and it was dead. So then they had to call someone, some other guy came, they were trying to jump the batteries, and it's just, to me, it's just, I don't want to sound bad, but it's ruining the quietness we had right before all this happened, and that's my main concern. I'm formally asking, as George said, move the poles back to the original location, put the new parking signs back up. If you leave this as is, because y'all spent money on it, maybe put golf carts only, that way we know it will only be local people here, Shore Acres, Bay Colony, maybe some of the surrounding communities, it'll be people that have more concerns. I do know that when the fishermen leave in the morning, my wife goes down there sometimes with other people, and they pick up fishing line, fish hooks, bait, I know when the wind's blowing in the right direction, we get some dead bait blowing underneath my house, I'm like, where's that at? We go down there and pick it up, throw in the trash cans on that stuff. We've seen a lot of trash left behind from people where they parked their car, I mean, literally getting in their car and they just drove us there, and oh, there's a hurricane, I want to get caught with that, and I'm like, seriously? So that's our concern, and we're just hoping that, I'm trying to go to one of those, too. We're just hoping that you take all of our concerns into y'all's considerations and do, you know, either remove what was put in, or what, as George suggested, make it kind of a little more Shore Acres-related for everyone to enjoy and use, because all the locals now, like I said, when I saw that family had to leave, because all these guys showed up last night fishing, and they're just throwing their stuff right out, you know, it kind of ruined it for the family, I kind of felt bad for them. That's my speech.
And maybe there's something y'all got planned that we don't know, but I didn't see it anywhere.
That's right.
Well, I was going to say something, but I feel everything is covered, so.
Well, you've been out there, I know, during the day and picking stuff up.
Don't want to waste your time if you've...
You got your time.
You've got five minutes.
I'm Hallie.
They want to hear from you.
Hallie Johnson, and I am, you all know Robert's wife and George's neighbor, and I agree with everything, so that's why I feel like, you know, but I could not wait to come down and use that little beach, that's what sold me, you know, my own, my own private beach, wow. But, you know, now I go down there and I'm concerned with my dogs stepping on the hooks or the fishermen and all that, they literally leave everything behind, so I know I'm not the only one with a bag and picking up, I see several other people down Miramar come down with bags, and that's very nice to see, but it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be so messy. Why are people so messy? There's trash cans and everything, and, yeah.
About not to be Shore Acres people.
Yeah, and I have, I have seen people pee many times facing our houses, and I'm like, I don't really want to see this, and then I'm worried that it will be escalating, be worse, and what will happen next with the, with the music, the stalled cars, and locals leaving the beach, and fishermen taking over, and, and since we are new here, I don't want to sound like, I don't want this, I don't want that, but I see a huge difference just from a few weeks ago, you know, how it all changed, so, yes. I would like to see that kind of, I would love to see golf carts pop down there only, you know, that would be super cool. I love all the golf carts in the community, and families coming down, and locals coming down, but, yeah, something is free, we know it's falling in time. Uh-oh.
That was for my phone.
Yeah. So, yes, so thank you very much.
Now I know what all that was, I'd have heard that ringing, I'd have absolutely been getting a phone call. I'll look for my phone after.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Item six-point-O, city administrative reports. Item six-point-one, the city manager report, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We'll start with the financial reports tonight, please. We're still talking about last fiscal year, this was effective as of the last day of September twenty twenty-three. The restricted debt, thirty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars, thirty-two cents. The unused portion of the wastewater project funds is fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents. Utility deposit funds, ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and eleven cents. The money held in text pool for road repair taxes, it's two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars and thirty-nine cents. We have in the COVID grant funds, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, forty-eight dollars and seven cents. We have left twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and fourteen cents in the park pavilion funds. In set funds, we have five thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents, and that's a total of eight hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-five cents in restricted funds. In unencumbered funds, in the general fund checking, we have six hundred and sixty-three, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand and sixty cents. Utility checking, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. And in our unencumbered text pool account, we have six hundred and forty-nine thousand, fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, for a total of one million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Council got any questions on the cash position? I think as Stephanie said earlier, we were, for the fiscal year in twenty twenty-two, we had about seventy percent, I think she said, twenty seventy and eighty. We're now at eighty, eighty to ninety percent, we built that up. So we're, we're in good shape if a storm were to come through and we needed cash. Let's keep it up, keep it up.
Go to the police report, you've got that in your hand. You see the numbers or nothing, or jumps out to me in the traffic stop, who continue to be aggressive on the traffic stops? And the number of citations written indicates a lot more traffic stops has been made in the past. As you're aware, we came back to fully staffed just a couple of months ago, it took a while to get the new officer trained. So these numbers are starting to come out on the, on the things that we can be proactive. And we all know that having a proactive traffic safety portion of the department helps out in all aspects of crime. It helps slow everything down. Well, I'll ask you first, you have any questions over the police report itself?
Mr. Harrison, the thirteen suspicious person vehicles, any of those be a problem, or are they just confirmed?
Not that I'm aware of. We get a lot of calls for suspicious people, because they will see people hanging around the pavilion, around the park, or sometimes they're, we have people that walk or jog late at night, and they'll see somebody at a kayak launch or something, and they'll call them in, because they look suspicious, and the officer checks them out. I'm not aware of anything that was really out of the ordinary last month. I will share, go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I was going to share with you that we're, we're hiring another reserve this week, and this will give us more reserves than we've had in a long time. That's a young lady from the Port Police Department, that's, she doesn't have a lot of time in yet, but she's got family commitments that keeps her from having a full-time job. but she's got family commitments that keeps her from having a full-time job. So she reached out to me a few weeks ago and to see if we would be interested in her coming down and being a reserve. And, uh, we're excited to get her on, cause that'll be, she can work nights and that's the hardest shift to fill when people take off. Normally, we have to move our assets from, we have to move somebody from days, sergeant from days to nights and things like that. So she'll be a welcome addition when we get her aboard this week, maybe next week.
Mr. McCowen?
No, sir.
Ms. Rollins?
No.
Mr. Grayson?
No.
Mr. Osmond?
No.
Mr. Bell?
Uh, what was the terroristic threat? Sounds pretty serious.
Well, it, it, that's the way it came into us. Uh, I looked in the book before I come over, last thing I do before I come over is look at the reports that were written on these activities. These activities is what was called in and we did not have a terroristic report, a terror, a terroristic threat report issued. So when the officer got there, it wasn't such.
Oh, okay. It's a broad definition anyway.
Yeah, it, terrorist threat is. I will, um, just, just one second. I, I don't, I don't know if I, I know I emailed the city staff, but we did have a backboard broken at the, at the basket, at the pavilion this month, this, this week, which is not in September, it's in October. But, uh, I vow that we're gonna try real hard to figure out who did that. That's that brand new basketball goal that Max Con donated to us. And, um, it's really aggravating that kids stood out there. I, I say kids, I don't know who it was, it might've been adults, I suspect it's, I, I suspect it's younger people. But, um, that's really aggravating, cause we try to have nice things in our community. We try to watch our spending and, and things like that. And, you know, now we gotta replace something. I, we, we could leave it out there broke, but I, I, we'll, we'll replace it. And that's just money we could use elsewhere. If y'all hear anything or see anything, and, and there was two residents that told me today that they heard something and didn't call us. And, you know, they text me all the time, all the, why they text me that night?
Yeah, the abuse, the abuse and neglect, is that anything important?
Gotta be somebody that can jump to the beat, though. I used to be able to read that room.
Was, was there a question, Mayor? I'm sorry.
The abuse neglect, is that, is that a, anything ongoing?
That was, um, a, a call, that's an ongoing call from a gentleman that's trying to get his kids from his.
Okay, he was here last month?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Gotcha.
All right, um, okay.
Public works. Uh, I'm so proud to hear that, that we've got rain and, and kind of helped us out on the leak. You'll see we repaired nine leaks last month and that doesn't include the four that were on the main service line. So we had another busy month, but, uh, almost all of that was captured in about the first two weeks of the month. It really slowed down after that, so, and it's going really good this week. It went really good last week, so I hope these numbers continue to fall. To bring you up to date, the new project that you guys approved last month for the new water line, that was initiated last week. And I, I don't remember, I think we've got twenty-five taps done already, so they're well ahead. The project that was supposed to take twelve weeks, now we're projecting to take about five weeks. They've really got a good start on it. Uh, residents are being real helpful, allowing them into the yards. Uh, David Sutt's doing a great job of knocking on doors and talking to people as well to prepare them for it. We've only had, um, one incident where a parent, a resident that just didn't understand what was going on. Once we sat down to talk to them, it, it was fine, but that project's going good. If we can keep good weather, we're gonna be finished that well before the end of the year.
Good. Any questions on the public works, guys?
Uh, you might as well just mention here that you had the culverts blasted.
Yes, we, uh, the last week, we had, um, the culverts jetted out with, uh, high-pressure, uh, water and cleaned them in the area of, we, we, I forget how many linear feet, we did, we did a lot, but mainly over here in the area of Byway, Seagrove, Forest, Fairfield, and that, and Madelon and that section. And I, I went down and it was raining that day and everything looked like it was flowing really well. I, I think that paid off, uh, in, in the long run. And, uh, they started mowing today. The, the new group started mowing, uh, today. They, is that my, my time up?
I thought they turned the volume off on this.
They, uh, they were supposed to start last week, but with the rain, I asked them not to, because I knew we'd have water in the bottom of the ditches. And I knew everybody's gonna be looking at them to see if it was an improvement like we promised. And as soon as the water got out, we're still gonna have grass at the bottom. Well, they started today and there's still water in the ditches in a lot of areas. But if you go down and look at the bayou in that area, they're not finished yet, but they've done a really good job.
I assure you, it's an improvement on West Forest and North Country Club.
The, the, the quality of the work, the weed eater versus the slope mower is a difference between night and day. And, um, the owner of the company is out there on a weed eater today. I stopped and talked to him three or four times. And, uh, they're excited, they're gonna bring some different equipment out tomorrow, cause on West, uh, on West Country Club, there's some vines that are about that thick and they're gonna bring more of a, um, uh, uh, saw blade out to go on the weed eater. But, uh, tomorrow, when it's daylight, go look, I think you'll be happy with what you've done.
Yeah, I looked at a couple of them myself and, uh, you can see through them now instead of, it barely can see anything.
Yeah, very nice.
All right, moving on. Item seven point, uh, O, business. Item seven point one, minutes from September eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting. Uh, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion from Mr. McCowen? Do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Ms. Ramos. You've had a chance to look at the minutes. Any changes you wish? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are accepted. Item seven point two, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. This is your opportunity to propose any amendments to the budget based upon the budget of hearing. Do I have a motion?
All motion.
A motion from Ms. Ramos, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second from Mr. Hoskins. Okay, y'all have any amendments you wanna make? Now that we've opened the item? Remember, the budget closed because we published it for the hearing. So if you wanna change, make any change, and now they have to do through amendment in a council meeting versus the workshops that we did before. Well, this is your opportunity. You'll get one more chance next week. Mr. Bell?
Uh, I have nothing.
Mr. Hoskins?
I have nothing, Mr. Bell.
Mr. Grayson?
Uh, no comments. I've read through it and, uh, it looks pretty much like what we talked about.
Uh, I hope it looks exactly like we talked about, honestly, but.
I couldn't, I didn't think differently.
Ms. Ramos?
I'm good.
And Mayor Motu McCowen?
I'm good also, sir.
All right, moving on. Item seven point three, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash ten dash O one, nominations to the planning and zoning commission. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Have a motion for Mr. Hoskins? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, was Mr. Grayson?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Hoskins, this is yours and I do believe your guest is witnesses, isn't it?
Your guest is a, this is Mr. Noel Munoz, sitting there with the hat on. He, uh, lives on Westview.
Best plumber in Shore Acres.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And, uh, he has a child, he's married, he has a child that, that uses our parks and everything. And, uh, was in vacancy on the planning and zoning commission. I asked him if he would, wouldn't mind joining and participating in some of the things that our city does and planning and zoning, so it could be a good fit. So I'd like to move that we appoint Mr. Noel Munoz to, uh, the planning and zoning commission to fulfill the term that expires, um, one thirty-one, twenty-five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. McCowen. Any questions?
Asked Noel to be here, so if you did have questions, you may ask.
You wanna say anything, Noel?
Uh, no.
I don't blame you. I wouldn't either. But we, we do appreciate you volunteering for this.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And Mr. Munoz is now on the planning and zoning commission and thank you for your service.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on.
Congratulations and condolences.
Moving on, item twenty, item seven point four, resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten dash O two, nomination of Mike Sullivan to the Harris County Appraisable Central, uh, District Board. Do I have a motion?
Well, I'll go ahead and move that we appoint Mike Sullivan to the Harris County Central Appraisal District Board.
Have a motion from Mr. Hoskins? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. McCowen. As you know, we, uh,
Thank you.
Need to nominate someone annually? Actually, biannual, uh, yes, biannual. And that's not right. Every two years. What is every two years?
Every other year.
Biannual, okay, I was right.
Semi-annual is what you were thinking.
Yeah, okay, so biannual. And, uh, we need to, uh, and Mike, Mike has done a great job. If, if, you've all met him, he's been here. Uh, Mr. Grayson may not have met him, I'm not sure. But he was a former Harris County Taxation Reflector and he's been on the board now for six years. So we nominate him each year and, uh, I suggest we do it again, so. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And passage unanimously. If you'll remind me to get a certified letter out about that. Item seven point five, resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten dash O three, the La Porte and jail and dispatch contract. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten dash zero three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. McCowen. Motion, Ms. Hoskins, second from McCowen. Mr. Harrison?
So this is, we discussed this during the budget proceedings. Uh, the city of La Porte, uh, their contracts normally run for three years and then we have to redo them. So they wrapped it up in the, uh, to one document this time. When they, so, so the way La Porte arrives at the, at the cost of, of care, of, of, uh, of services does, like they take the jail and they decide how much money it takes to run the jail for a year, including, uh, capital funds, salaries, uh, benefits, everything. They divide that by the number of residents they have in the city of La Porte and then they multiply that number by the number of residents we have. So that's how they came to the original number. And then every year, based off their budgets, they do increases based off how much the increase in those are. So it's a solid number and you can understand how they got there. But it did go up about, I think it's about nine percent for the next three years. And this is the dispatch and the jail service contract. It's just two of the contracts. It's not the fire yet, that's not, it's just the dispatch and fire.
Dispatch and jail?
I mean, dispatch and jail, I'm sorry.
All right, Mr. McCowen?
This is your bid. Well, I think that with what the service we get, if we didn't use them, and we are talking about jail service, if we did have a class B misdemeanor or even a class C, we'd have to transport them out of our city far away and it would probably take half a shift to do the paperwork if we took them to the county, if not longer. So I think this is a great deal for us.
Ms. Rollins?
I have no questions.
Mr. Grayson?
No question.
Mr. Hoskins?
I absolutely agree with what Mr. McCowen said, cause if we had two incidents on the same night, we couldn't handle it. Right? I mean, and if we don't have any for two weeks, it doesn't cost us that extra anyways. So it's, it's very flexible for us and I think it's a great deal. That's it.
Mr. Bell?
I, I agree, but I just had, had a question. The last meeting, uh, didn't you, uh, tell us that this payment we do every month, whether we use the service or not? Is that correct?
It's, it's a set amount and we pay it monthly.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm just curious.
It's a known cost, it doesn't fluctuate.
It's, I, I agree with you.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And Mr. Harrison has the contract. All right, item seven point six, third regular meeting. As you know, we do have a meeting next week. It's unusual, but we do, cause we have to vote on the tax rate and budget. Um, do you want a third meeting on ten twenty-three? Do you see a need for? Anyone? Mr. Harris?